Recording in progress.
I'd like to call a meeting to order if you can stand for the pledge, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America, we are a nation under God, a republic of indivisible, justiciable, and justice.
So we have two board members who are not able to be present with us physically, but they are up on the screen and will be participating throughout the meeting today. So Kim, are you all set with the roll call?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Result of the Board of Education approved the agenda for the May 2nd, 2022 regular Board of Education meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Shelley first. Second Denise. All in favor? Opposed? Passes eight zero. Next up on the agenda is the Board of Education's spotlight. So Superintendent Thompson will lead this portion of the meeting.
Good evening, everyone. The Board of Education will recognize and honor the following Baldwinsville Central School students for their outstanding achievements and accomplishments. Four Baldwinsville Elementary students will have their artwork displayed in the 32nd Annual Legislative Student Art Exhibit. The exhibit is presented by the New York State Art Teachers Association in partnership with the New York State United Teachers Association. Congratulations to the following students. Aslan Kugan, Paige Kazoo, Lachlan Dillon, and Griffin Chiron. With those students, please come forward.
You guys can come right up here and sit for Tom. We'll have something for you. Next up on the agenda is a Correspondence Board Activities and Committee Report. And April 21st, we had a DEI community event. Is there anyone who attended who would like to speak?
I actually attended the event. It was a really good event. It was led off by Derek Dorsey, who was the young man that actually came here to start us in our DEI journey. But it was a really good session. We talked about different things and we had breakout rooms where you can actually go and get deeper into the conversation that we were having. And there were a couple breakout rooms. Liberty Resources was there, The Promise Zone, Dirty Junior High's culturally responsive work, Books Can Be Mirrors, building a diverse home library. And the one I attended, work is on here, was Ms. Buddha Necessary, Voice and Choice. And I tell you, they explained how they chose the books and the activities that they left there. Well, how the students really chose the books that they would read and go over in class. And it was really interesting. It was a really good session, in my opinion.
Thank you, Brian. And then on Monday, April 25th, we had a building visit during the daytime with students present at Reynolds Elementary School. If there's anyone who'd like to speak to that who attended.
I had the opportunity to go on that tour and Mrs. Strato was excellent in the tour, going into different classrooms, seeing the kids, explaining to us some information about the UPK program. It was a highlight for me, of course, was always being in there with the kids. And some of the pre-kids students when we went in were playing dress up. So some were superheroes, some was an astronaut. So it was great to get in there, see the spaces, see the kids, see the teachers in action. And it was a great informational tour.
Thank you. And then later on that evening, we had a Board of Education work session here at the Transportation Center discussing the next capital project, if anyone would like to talk about that. Or I will. What we did is we review, looking at what the next phase we may propose going forward, talking about the grade reconfiguration. I think we came to agreement that that's necessary, especially talking about the spaces. And I'll say the building tours, especially during the day, definitely helped a lot of people. Some of my more colleagues have never been in the elementary schools, other than maybe the one that their children attend. And it really gave us a visual of all the different challenges the buildings have and the need for that, especially since education has changed so much since a lot of those buildings were actually built. And we talked a lot about the next phases that come forward, you know, right from the beginning, making sure that we maximize aid and that there's little to no tax impact on our community members. And the importance of setting up a capital reserve to help fund that, to make sure that that happens for everyone in the community. I don't know if there's anyone else who have any additional comments. I'd say Tony.
I do. I think it was a really good discussion for the reasons you mentioned, but also to show and hear from, you know, some of our administration here about what, not only this capital project, but really funding the future, what that is going to mean for, you know, maybe not my children in school, but for the next generation of Baldwinsville students. And I'm really excited for them to be able to, you know, benefit from what we're doing with the school for not only the students, but as well as the administration, staff, and teachers, that I think it's going to be great for them. Like I said, my kids may not be here still when it's all completed, but it's really exciting for that next generation that they're going to be able to benefit from that. So that was something that stood out to me. And, you know, we talked a lot about some of those benefits for all the students involved with Baldwinsville. So I'm excited for that.
And then we had on Wednesday, April 27th.
No, I was going to say about the PTA.
Okay, go ahead.
So we had a joint PTA meeting and Kim and Joe and I went over the capital project. Kim also did the budget presentation. We discussed school picture photographers. And it was probably one of the quickest meetings we've had, so, but it was good and always agreed to.
Great, thank you. Anyone have any other events or meetings that they attended since the last board meeting?
I don't have any other meetings, but I just want to say it's Teacher Appreciation Week this week. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of our teachers for everything they do for our students, and we appreciate you.
Also, we have six scheduled meetings. We've already done half of them for Strategic Plan Planning Committee. And our strategic plan is supposed to expire at the end of this year, but we decided to do a one-year extension because after discussion at the first meeting, we decided that we needed more time to really take a look at it because a lot has changed. Not just a pandemic, a lot has changed since that was done. And we had our second meeting last week. We reviewed the 2015 perception survey, talked a lot about surveys, what stakeholder groups we need to hear from to help us have a vision going forward to help all of our students. And it was determined that we were going to, you know, cover as many stakeholder groups as we can, and the importance of reasoning for that. And then we had our third meeting today and we started reviewing the graduate survey that they did that covered the span of 2005 to 2012 and also thinking about, you know, where those students were and how much has changed just by looking at those comments. And definitely the need to reach out to graduates going forward to see how education's changed, what they got from this school, and where we can improve going forward. So I think it's going to be really exciting. We have plenty of time to get something in place by the time the extension, which hopefully everyone approves tonight, for next year. And then also as part of the safety plan review subcommittee, we have to do that, review that every single year. And there's no significant changes on that, other than some personnel name changes and some positions. And the only major change was I asked about employees' cell phone numbers being within the plan of their personal or school cell phones. And I think we're taking that to the main committee to have further discussion with that and how to handle that. Next up on the agenda is the Student Board Report. So Kaylee Evans is going to share with us what the students have been doing.
Thank you. With just two months left of school, students are busier than ever. Prom was this past Saturday and the juniors that I talked to said they had a great time and they loved the decorations. Some sports updates, our spring sports teams are doing exceptionally well this season. And as of last week, both the boys and girls lacrosse teams have made national rankings. The girls' rowing team had races this weekend and Beaville's boats won all their races. And after three rookie practices, the marching band has had their first full practice this past Saturday with new members joining for the upcoming season, including our trip to Darian Lake on May 28th and our trip to Philadelphia in July. The New York State School Music Association's annual solo festival is coming up next Wednesday and will take place at Sewell Road Middle School, where participants will receive a score and comments from judges after performing their solos. As a student that's taken part in this festival many times, I can't wait to participate again for the first time in two years. Another news, Student Advisory Council met last week to plan the Culture Fest coming up on June 2nd and to plan for Teacher Appreciation Week with lots of fun surprises for Baker's staff. We also talked about the Senior Ball, which will take place June 11th with tickets going on sale starting May 16th. Tickets to Baker's production, Mary Poppins, are also still available for all three shows coming up this Friday and Saturday. You can find tickets online at beaviltheater.com. Last week, a flight crew came in to teach our actors and staff how to safely take flight for the production. AP testing started today and will continue through the next two weeks. So good luck to all the students taking exams. We're also excited to have 21 VOCs students being inducted into the National Technical Honors Society on May 18th. Overall, students are busy but excited for the future, just as our board is with the election coming up this month. I'm currently running an information table with Evan Bernyster, a Baker student and a friend of mine, to get students informed and involved in the election process and get students who are qualified an opportunity to learn more about the candidates and to vote. And we're excited for the election. And on behalf of both Evan and myself, we would like to wish the best of luck to all the candidates running. And thank you for being enthusiastic about getting involved in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kaylee. That was a very thorough report of a lot of amazing things happening. Thank you. Next up on the agenda, we have public participation. Do you have any speakers tonight?
Yes, we do.
Public comments are welcome. They are limited to three minutes per speaker for a total of up to 30 minutes for all speakers combined. They should not include specific individuals or positions. Unless appropriate, the Board of Education will respond by letter to the individual's comment question. Board members will not engage in conversation or comment during this period. Specific employee or student concern should be communicated to superintendent schools during regular business hours. If there are more than five individuals speaking on the same issue, please limit the topic to just five speakers of your choice as a group. We are all here for our students and as expected, everyone speaking tonight will follow these rules and everyone present will model behaviors irrespective of students in this school district. Are there speakers we have, Kim?
We have two.
Thank you.
The first speaker is Steve Guiomo in regards to book banning and a recent email to parents.
Good evening. My name is Steve Guiomo and I'm a 2006 graduate of Baker. I've got two kids. My oldest will be entering the public school system next year as a kindergartner at Reynolds, and I'm also married to a ninth grade English teacher. So I've watched with a vested interest your meeting over the past several years. And I was finally compelled to speak today in response to the email that the board sent out last week. I've already communicated my thoughts to a lot of you directly in a private email. Personally, I felt that the email was not only unprecedented, but that it was intentionally misleading, that its timing was suspect, and I thought it was inappropriate. The email was ostensibly in response to purported misinformation about the ability of a state to take away AP accreditation if certain texts or topics are banned. And the email went to great lengths to emphasize that to date, no books have been banned. And while that may be true, it was glaring in its absence that there was no pledge to not ban books going forward. The decision was also noteworthy, in my opinion, because you've never sent an email similar prior to this. Not to address the lies the teachers are teaching critical race theory, not to dispel any of the masking lies and paranoia that have run rampant for two years, not to reassure parents that reading a book with a gay character will turn their kids gay. Not until now, three weeks before the Board of Education election, did you choose to speak up. And the email also went on, as several of the board candidates have done, to emphasize that we support and trust our teachers. We believe our teachers have the best interests of our students in mind when selecting and recommending books for the curriculum. And with all due respect, that's just not true. And anybody who's been paying attention to these meetings can see that with their own two eyes. Just in the past two years, certain members of the board, not all of them, but certain ones have grilled curriculum directors and teachers to make them justify their texts. You've changed the rule about how many texts can be approved at one time. You've coerced teachers into sending a letter to parents outlining when a text may touch on sensitive topics. And who defines what those topics are? I have no idea. That's anybody's guess, honestly. From the sound of it, it's a term that's defined by one particularly squeaky wheel who's getting all the grease. And you've made it mandatory that parents be allowed to opt their kids out of specific assignments and be provided with an alternative text to be read simultaneously with their classmates. And to me, the ironic part about that is that the alternative text to All American Boys, which was the book that apparently had set off this firestorm, was of Mice and Men, a book whose entire plot is centered around a mentally challenged worker who's accused of rape and ultimately shot in the head by his best friend. A book which features precisely one black character who's forced to live in the stables like an animal. But apparently, that book didn't rise to the definition of a sensitive topic. And as a matter of fact, you found it so uncontroversial that it's apparently the safe alternative to an apparently controversial text. So in conclusion, I was disappointed by the decision to send this email like you did last Friday. And honestly, I thought it was inappropriate with three weeks before board election that you sent it at all. And to me, it read as an attempt to benefit certain board candidates who hold certain positions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming to speak tonight, Kim.
The next speaker is Suzanne Schumacher in regards to AP World History Textbooks.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Suzanne Schumacher, and I teach AP World History and Global History at CW Baker High School. I have been a professional educator for over 30 years. My first seven years was at an inner-city school in Omaha, Nebraska, and I am finishing my 24th year in the Baldwinsville Central School District. I have a BA in International Studies and Russian Studies from Wells College and a master's degree in Russian and Eastern European Studies from Indiana University, as well as a teaching certificate from the University of Nebraska. I studied in the Soviet Union as an undergrad and was awarded a Fulbright Scholarship to study at Moscow State University. I'm also a very proud Beaville parent and taxpayer. In fact, my daughter Katie, a 2014 graduate of Baldwinsville and a member of the Baker's Dozen, gave me a very proud moment yesterday as she walked across the stage at Upstate Medical University with her medical degree. She is a proud graduate of this district and I am in a unique position that I'm both an educator and a parent and a concerned parent. A concerned parent in regards to an AP World History textbook that was recently selected by my colleagues Erica Garcia and Jen O'Clara. So earlier in the year, we approached Renee Burnett about the fact that our AP World History textbook was outdated and that we needed to update it per the current AP World History guidelines. We have all gone through extensive training to teach this course. We've attended week-long seminars and refresher courses. The College Board provides not only training, but also curriculum development, course guidelines, content, important historical thinking skills, and lesson plans to help us engage our students. Our first step in this process was perusing the AP World History website for the approved textbooks, because as you see, AP World and College Board gives us a list of textbooks that we must choose from in order to teach this course. After that, we selected four from the list and gave these to Renee. She in turn set up a process for textbook adoption and had us examine them according to a number of criteria. It was a blind examination of the textbooks in order to avoid bias. And I must say that Renee does an excellent job of having us look at all of the textbooks and reviewing them very seriously. The examination took quite a few hours, and after a close examination, the decision was unanimously made for the Strayer et al. textbook. At the last meeting, which I listened to, a member of the board raised concerns about a chapter on the Industrial Revolution and stated that the textbook glorified, not my words, Karl Marx. I could give you a long and boring lecture on Marxist ideology, but suffice to say that none of the three of us on the committee believed this to be the case. After close examination, it was seen that this type of textbook is necessary in order to teach the course. And I can give you lots of examples of revolutions throughout history that Marxist ideology is very important in understanding in order for the students to understand. It's insulting me that the members of the board, certain members of the board, do not trust those of us who have taught the course for many years with the professionalism that we deserve. The textbook is only one tool that is used in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item of the agenda. Item A, Result of the Board of Education approved the consent agenda for students to be attached. Can I have a motion, please? Shelley first. Second, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. We now move on to the next item, which is the Leadership Report. So Superintendent Thompson will continue with this section of the meeting.
Thank you. Danielle, next, we have our academic quarterly goal updates. And Danielle LaMourning? I'm sorry, Joel.
Want to do the teachers first?
Do the teachers first so they can get home. They would probably appreciate that. And the timing, that would be good for this week, right?
That would be absolutely.
Let's switch it around, please. And may I have-
You probably need to do better with that, the agenda planning.
Yes. May I have the UPK team come up, please?
So I'm very excited to come here and talk about UPK tonight. Just came from meeting the VOCs today with other districts. And I have to say, I was very proud to see the progress these teachers have made in such a short time. So I'm heartwarming to take you through just an overview of where we came from and what we're doing today, and then I'll let them take over. They're the experts to answer your questions. But this process began quite a while ago, as far as some numbers. So according to New York State, so we're all on the same page, 18 students in a class with one teacher and one teaching assistant, which required for UPK. So we do have those four sessions that we have now, two at Palmer and two at Reynolds. This began back in August of '21, submitting the grant between Joe and Danielle, working on diligently and getting all that approved. And then began the process of building something from scratch, which really has been a first time for myself after all the years. So doing a lot of research, going to do some visitations. I spotlighted Marcellus because they've been very supportive. Myself and the learning coaches going out to observe what does a full-day UPK look like. And as a former kindergarten teacher, it looked a lot different than what I remember. So did that, had a research curriculum, equipment, materials, all those good things, and interview, which was a great experience for myself, maybe not for all of them, but to get to meet so many talented people. So then we started the program mid-year. So we had the benefit of January to bring everyone together, the teaching assistants, the teachers, to really build the curriculum, really build a solid team. I think, you know, having that month together was amazing. And during that time, they also screened students, met parents, gave tours, all those things. And then February, we opened up and gave you an overview of the registrations as far as the homeschools of the students, too. But let me introduce the team, because that's the most important case. So we have Eric E. Young and Megan Jacobs from Reynolds, along with Danielle Kipnis and Gretchen, the two assistants. We have Courtney Todd and Catherine Schneid from Palmer, along with Penny Leader and Rebecca Wurden. So all of them are new to Beaville, except for Penny, who was our- Bring us through, who's been at Palmer, who helped build this. But I think the best way before we answer questions is to give you a sneak peek at what a day in the life of UPK looks like. So with the help of Sarah Buckshot, we put together this short.
We talked this morning about pre-kindergarten, about this number. It's not called five. It's all really beautiful, silly. Pre-kindergarten is a full-day program here at the Baldwin School Central School District. We're excited to offer this early education program that is designed to prepare preschool-age children for kindergarten. Our hope is that our pre-kindergarten students will develop a lifelong love of learning. And that love story begins behind these doors. Let's take a look inside a day in the life of a pre-K student. One of the main goals of pre-K is to develop a routine. Students arrive to hang up their coats, backpacks, and lunch in their cuppies. After breakfast, students gather for morning meetings, which is different in each classroom and provides a foundation for the day. Let's take a look inside Ms. Young's classroom as she talks to her students about emotions.
I wonder what we're trying to do, because I'm sorry, because I was waiting for the playroom today, but I don't see them. And she asks, how do you think Cece is feeling? She's sad.
The majority of learning during the day takes place during center time. Center time engages play with development. Students are learning not only to work together, but learn together and play together. Let's take a look at some of the centers that our students love. Students also eat lunch together. This is an important social time for our students. This is an important social time for our students. Quiet time is also built into our students' routine. It's a time to just relax. Students also get the opportunity to experience specials, music, art, the library, and physical education.
That's our stats. Uh, stats, hi. This is what we did today. We're gonna say, oh.
Now up here from some of our teachers.
Hi, my name is Erica Young, and I'm a pre-K teacher here at Reynolds Elementary. My goal in pre-K is to expose them to the routine of a classroom and create independent and kind students for the future. I think that it's important that they see the daily structures of a classroom, they see the materials hanging on the wall of the classroom, and they are able to take that exposure and build it into their foundation for a love of learning. And I think that pre-K is so important because it provides our youngest learners with that exposure to set them up for a more successful experience. Thank you, Beville.
Hi, my name is Catherine Schneid, and I'm one of the UPK teachers. My goal is for the students to be excited to come to school each day and excited to learn new things. I want their first experience at school to be a positive one and set them up for many years of learning ahead of them.
Hi, I'm Megan Jacobs, and I'm one of the UPK teachers here at Reynolds. I hope for the school year for my preschoolers to learn how to communicate with each other, how to help one another. I hope they learn the basics of self-help skills, of doing scissors, glue, the simple things that they learn in school. But I also hope that they learn more about who they are as a person, how to be a good friend, how to be helpful, how to show empathy towards one another, and just to feel the love in their heart and to know how to spread it to others.
Hi, my name is Courtney Todd, and I'm one of the pre-K teachers at Palmer Elementary. My hopes for our pre-K girls is that they be here with a love of learning. I want them to look back as they grow older and remember all the fun that they had learning and playing with their friends. I hope that they continue to be kind and caring as they enter our world and use all the ways that we learned in our classroom. I hope that they continue to take pride in themselves and their work and have the confidence that they can do anything within our world. And I've got a pleasure. Thank you.
Now, as you can see, it's a busy day in pre-K. On that note, before we get to the final slide, we'll open it up to any questions you might have of the team that they can answer for you.
How do you keep from just colliding all day?
Lots of modeling, lots of use of puppets. We love our puppets, and just lots of engagement. We play with them to show them, you know, appropriate play and help them build on their own creativity. And, I mean, they're having a great time. I could talk a lot, but one thing I will just say, on behalf of all of the parents, I asked all of my parents, they knew we were coming tonight, and I said, like, if there's anything you wanted the board to know, what would it be? And many of them commented how much they appreciate the quality of the program that we've put in place and that it's free right here in their local school district. And they commented, many of them came from a private preschool program, and they said that they are just blown away and impressed with how much we're doing and for free. I mean, and within their taxes, how all that works, but they really just wanted to thank you for bringing this program to Baldwinsville.
I just want to thank you.
Hi.
I just want to thank all of you. This is, you know, again, this goes back to what we're doing with the funding in the future. We're, you know, making, we have the best district. I've said it over and over again. And we're just making it better by bringing in universal pre-K, making enough room for everyone. And thank you for what you're doing. It's, it's aw- it's awesome. Just watching that, I'm tired.
I don't know, I thought Brian was gonna start dancing up here.
So on the final slide, we do have the numbers so far for next year. So you can see the parents' interest at the top box there is huge. We already have 184 students registered for the lottery. Did a breakdown of schools, their homeschools. And also the hopeful partnership of Head Start, part of this, too.
Tony, I have one question. That was a fantastic video. Thank you. Can you explain a little bit? Because I've had some questions about the lottery, like how that will work.
So we're actually, I can answer that. We're hopeful that we may not need the lottery as it stands right now because of the enrollments for kindergarten and the five elementary schools are a little bit down. And based on space and some movement of some other grade levels, we are actually looking at the potential and with an increase in funding from the state, we received another $600,000 in this current budget for universal pre-K and above and beyond what they allocated last school year. So we're looking at potentially having nine sections in district if the board authorizes us to hire three additional staff members. That's how it'll weigh out. So at a future board meeting, we'd be looking at potentially hiring three additional staff, teaching staff, and then teaching assistant staff as well. And with that, in the partnership, we should have enough seats for those that have completed registrations at this point in time, which I think is a great thing. So hopefully, we will not have to utilize the lottery. If we do have to use the lottery, it stands, based on the funding, that priority goes first to students that are considered from low economic households, so those who qualify for free and reduced lunch, as well as those with, label is having a learning disability. They take priority first. We have to guarantee those seats. And then after that, it would be just a random lottery for students. And basically, all of the families, doesn't matter when you've registered, anybody up through the registration deadline, they're numbered, and we pull randomly until all of the seats are filled. So that's how it would work if we have to use the lottery. But our fingers are crossed that with the additional funding and some new positions because we have space, that we will not have to utilize that lottery this year.
Joe, I know I asked this, it was last year, but do you foresee that funding continuing with the state going forward?
Based on the, well, the fact that they increased again this year, more than doubled our allocation based on New York State Education Department priorities as well as the Federal Department of Education, I just don't see this going away. So I do believe, based on the commitment from SED and the federal government, that universal pre-K is necessary and it's a, it's here to stay.
Thank you for your presentation. I really did enjoy, when I was at Reynolds and Palmer, seeing the kids. And actually, one thing that really touched home was, my kids are a little bit older now, but when they first entered kindergarten, the way the curriculum is, there isn't a lot of time for play and engaging that way. So I thought it was really, really great to see that at this level, you're able to provide that. And of course, that goes with the love of learning. So they're excited about going to school. So thank you for that. And this might be a question for Jo. So if there is the possibility for the numbers for next year in a lottery, what is the max capacity in each building or sections of students within a, within a class?
So it's gonna be 18 students per section, max. And not every building, based on enrollment. So unfortunately, as it stands right now, Van Buren is just at capacity. We had hoped to add a section there because we're going down a kindergarten in that, in that building. But based on other shifts, you visited the building. It's just two packs. So that would be the only building that would not house a universal pre-K. Reynolds, or excuse me, Reynoldswood housed three, Palmer, three, McNamara, two, and Eldonwood, one. All maximum of 18 students. And then we have the Head Start through Peace that would also run an off-site location where we would, part of us receiving the funding, the maximum funding, we have to have an outside agency participate in universal pre-K as well. And so they submitted a RFP, and we'd be looking to bring that forward at the next board meeting as well to approve their placement.
Does that, does that organization, I'm assuming, must follow the same curriculum for the UPK that our district does?
The fellow state centers, actually, that specific program has a few more options available because of the Head Start partnership and some federal funding that they receive for their priorities to really help families that qualify for free and reduced, those lower-income families. So they're gonna hopefully prioritize, but they'll do the same thing with Bussing and other supports if they have a place.
Thank you.
The outside group, now, they'll still be going for free?
Yes, okay.
Not, not really a question, it's kind of, this is math. Just kind of an area of interest to be looking at kind of as we move forward. It is, it looks like there's a pretty significant increase for next year, but looking at the proportion of students who we have for pre-K that, in terms of kindergarten and that proportion, that go private versus take advantage of the program offered through the school.
So we're not anticipating this based on conversations with the pre-K programs that currently exist. It's not obviously all of the students that would be age-eligible to participate. We've heard from some families that they prefer actually a half-day program, and certainly those other programs are running half-day programs. So, I mean, I think there's a mix. We'll get a better sense after this year when we see what registration looks like next year, see if our pattern changes. And we do know our enrollment is decreasing slightly at the elementary level. So I think two years of data and registrations will help us make some longer-term decisions about programming for pre-K.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was, I was getting at. I wasn't, I wasn't trying to imply that our students or our family wouldn't want the private option. Just, I, it was interesting in terms of the, the numbers and data in terms of kind of what proportion that might be, you know, like you said, for some more longer-term planning.
Tony and the team, thank you very much. You probably should be at home because you're, you're gonna be tired. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jo, you wanna go right into the, to the academic outlook or quarterly update, please?
Yep, so we have Danielle.
Danielle? Thank you.
Based on our conversation at the last meeting, so we have some updated data, mainly from the end of the third marking period. So the academic data has been updated as well as the universal screening and benchmarking. So Danielle's gonna walk us through the live, interactive report, and then certainly ask questions along the way.
And just as a friendly reminder, anybody can access this on our webpage at any time.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, I'm here to just give some updates for our quarter three report card. Like Jason had just mentioned, our report card is always housed right on our district's website. It can be accessed by clicking up at the top of the website on the District tab, and then it's right under the About Us section. So anyone can access this report at any time. But as Jo mentioned, we have some updated data. The summary sheet that you see here is what I will review with you as I go through the report. But please feel free to stop me to ask any questions as we go through. This slide that we see here is just our enrollment report. You will notice that our current enrollment, it has actually gone up since the start of the school year. Bed-Stuy enrollment was 5,356 students, and our current, at the time of the report, was 5,395. So that's just a brief update there. Next, I just wanted to highlight that our student involvement page is also updated because we now have our spring sports that are included and any spring clubs or activities. So just for example, you'll notice varsity track. The boys' spring team has 99 students who are on the roster. But as you scroll through this list, you'll see some other activities that are noted. The other update to this page is really just a formatting update. I have set the page now so that if someone were to click on any of the areas in this pie chart, I'll click on this one, for example. It's set up to filter so that the other charts now coincide with what I clicked on. So I've just selected Baker, and then you can see the others that also adjust. It's just another way of filtering the report, similar to how those filters at the top worked that I've explained in some previous meetings. As Jo had mentioned, when it comes to our academic universal screening, May is actually our spring benchmarking month. So students will be benchmarked using AmesWeb Plus in grades K and 1, using STAR in grades 2 through 9. So the, the data that you see in this chart isn't necessarily updated. But what we wanted to highlight is that throughout the year, we also receive data comparison reports. So in conjunction with our partners at the Regional Information Center, we were able to take a look at some comparison data between our district's average percentile rank and the average percentile rank of students across the region. So when it came to our kindergarten and first-grade students using our AmesWeb Plus screening tool, there's about 30 other districts in the region who also use that screening tool. So when we're on our filter for K and 1, these numbers would adjust so that it's reflective of how our district compares to about 30 other districts in the region who are also using that screener. On the other side, grades 2 through 9, that's using our STAR benchmark tool. And similarly, if we were to choose any of those grade levels, 2 through 9, the data would reflect that. And just for example, if I select our second grade, these numbers here adjusted. So our average percentile rank for the district in second grade, let me just select our winter benchmark as an example. Our average percentile rank was 57, and the regional comparison was a rank of 39. So these are in rank order. So you can compare that our district scored significantly higher when it came to the winter benchmark of our second graders. But you can certainly use the filter across grade levels, across benchmark periods, and you'll notice similar data. So kudos to our teams, kudos to our programs. This data, we've looked at very closely, and it's definitely reflective of some programmatic shifts over the last few years. I know especially on the early elementary side, when we look at phonics, when we look at phonemic awareness. So any questions about that? Because that was a lot of information packed in there, and, and just an update to that slide.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you a question, Danielle. First of all, congratulations to you and the team for doing what you've done in less than a year. I think when I first came onto the board versus where you guys are at right now, you deserve an enormous amount of credit. So first of all, thank you for putting this together. And I think it's, it's a, it's a great visualization and insight for the community to understand how the data is shown and the important statistics that we're, we're tracking as, as a team. So I wanted to make sure that you got kudos for that. And that's really, honestly, it's- So I wanted to make sure that you got kudos for that and that's really honestly, it's great work.
Thanks.
I have a couple of questions. So when we say the region, is that the Bosse's region? Okay.
Yeah, it's OCM or the Central New York region. So for STAR, there's about 20 other districts that 2 through 9 are in comparison to.
Perfect. Second question is, is there a way to look at the highest and the lowest and then the mean and the median as to where we compare with the other OCM districts? Is there a way to do a scoring on that?
I love is there a way questions. There's always a way. Yes, there is Frank, and we would be happy to put that together in a separate report to share. We have pieces of it, I would say, together, but I can compile something more comprehensive.
Okay, nothing, just out of curiosity, I mean if it's, you know, if it's a doctoral research project, then don't do it. I was just kind of curious if it's at your fingertips.
You were just looking, this is the mean data, so you're looking for median?
Yeah, median.
Mean, max.
Mean, max, yeah. Just for fun, thank you.
That is fun. You're welcome. Other question? I'll keep going.
She's not joking, she really enjoys it.
I really do enjoy it.
So do I.
There are no updates to our behavioral universal screener similar to our epidemic screening tools. We are currently screening students. So actually, throughout the month of April, our teams at Dirgy and Baker have been working with students to complete the self-rating using the VIMAS rating tool. And then in the month of May, our teachers will be doing the rating, K6, and also our seventh graders at RAY will be completing the self-assessment. So that data report will be included in our quarter four update, which is just kind of strange to think that that will be the next time that I share this report with you. The next set of slides really go through what the mastery level, passing level, or failure rate was for, in this specific slide, our regions courses. And then in the next three slides, it splits it out into courses by department. So these courses are held at Dirgy and at Baker. And we really don't see a huge shift in our course score data from marking period to marking period. The range, when I went back and looked at our quarter two scores compared to our quarter three scores, I noticed some fluctuations, whether it was improving by a percentage point to three, decreasing by a percentage point to three, but nothing that specifically stood out as a huge change from the second marking period to the third marking period, for example. So when it came to our regions scores specifically, 89% of students are passing their regions level courses as of the third quarter. And then like I had mentioned, on the next three slides, we can see those course scores broken down by department. So this slide is math, science, English, and social studies. And then some different groupings with our regions courses, our AP courses, our world language courses on the following slide. And then our other departments, often our elective courses are business, music, tech, fax, PE and health, and our PLTW courses. So just as a reminder, when viewing the course scores on these pages, we do have that marking period filter at the top. So you can just select whatever marking period it is that you're interested in looking at. If no filter is selected, it's averaging all of the marking periods together. Questions about our course score data? The next, I'll just go through the next couple of slides here. Again, nothing huge or drastic to report. On our discipline slide, we continue to have a little bit less than 20% of students who have had a disciplinary referral that's been documented this school year. But really, the shifts that we see from marking period to marking period are, you know, obvious increases in the number of referrals, which is going to happen naturally as you progress through the year, but nothing where we've seen a drastic jump in a specific area. It's really maintained to be pretty consistent over the course of the year. Any questions about that?
Sorry, just one quick question on this one. So this is showing cumulative for the year? This one doesn't have the fifth, okay. All right, I was just looking for a filter or something. Okay, got it.
If you'd request that, that's something that we might be able to look at. Is there a way? And then our next set of slides are really specific to attendance data. An interesting data point to report here, the last two marking periods, again, when you take the total number of students times the total number of days of attendance, we're actually around 750,000 days in attendance. When you just flip it and you're looking at it in a different way, we'll end the year around a million. So what's interesting when it comes to this data is that the first marking period and the second marking period, students were present for 90.5% of days. We've seen a tiny increase in the percentage of days that students have been present, moving up from 90.5% to 91% of days. So not huge, again, but nice to see moving in the positive direction there. Beyond that, I know some of our reports have focused more heavily on our COVID data or not, but definitely happy to see that the trend that we experienced during a week in January really has subsided. And we're seeing some pretty consistent numbers now. We're averaging about 14 cases a day. Mondays are definitely higher case numbers, but the reasoning behind that is because we don't get cases necessarily reported or tracked over the weekend. So Monday's kind of a catch-up day. And then it seems like Fridays it wanes back down. So you actually can see that, interestingly enough, on the chart. So that's our COVID data. And then our chronic absenteeism, still attendance-related data that we're talking here. And when we look at the number of students who are either not at risk or might be at risk, there's about 79% of our students who would not be considered chronically absent. I will note that students who are chronically absent are missing an average of 22 days, which is certainly concerning and something that our school-level teams work very diligently to try to stay on top of. Students who are not considered chronically absent are still missing almost nine days of school, which is still concerning any days of school. So that's always just a data point that we're keeping a close eye on as well. Other than that, are there any questions?
Yeah, one, just like the past one. So the chronically absent, does that take into account quarantines and the COVID numbers? Or is that outside of that?
It's outside of that, because those would be considered the excused absence.
Yeah, thank you. How many days of school attended, did you say that was?
Approximately 750,000.
You really do enjoy it.
I like big spreadsheets. Last year I would joke, because it was the first reporting year we had to report on the number of day students who were present. Prior to COVID, it was only the number of day students were absent. And so we had a lot of data work. Our district data manager, Mary Moyer, and I had to physically manipulate a spreadsheet of a million rows to report to the state, so.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions tonight?
Danielle, I just wanted to say, I want to reiterate this, that I love how this data, the visuals have progressed since I've been on the board, so I thank you. I know you've worked really hard on this with the team.
It certainly tells a story.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Danielle. Sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Matt. Matt, you go first.
Sorry, Danielle, I just wanted to check and see, do you have these snapshots that you're taking for us archived, so if we wanted to kind of take a look back, they're available?
I do. So each marking period, I go through and I set the filters to that current marking period and I save the report as a PDF. So they're on my desktop that then I can refer back to, but I always want to make sure that we're archived and met and saving it so that when I do the update, should there be questions, we're not trying to go back and drill down to what it was when I last reported. I can just pull that up and reference it quick.
Right, that's great, because I know that the actual regions test data comes out much later, so kind of looking at, you know, is there a comparison between the grades in the courses versus the test scores? We'd have to go back and look at some of that some of that to have the foresight to archive that information. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Just a quick follow-on for that, can, is there a place where we can keep the archived lists on the webpage so that we can go back and look over time? I know this is the first full year that we've done this, but I think that quarterly, or however frequently you're doing the snapshots, if they exist somewhere, that's, as I always tell my people, not their desktop, that would be great.
Yeah, we can absolutely save the PDFs someplace on the website, but again, the report card, that slide also includes those filters in the interactive version so that it can be referred back to as well.
Maybe we can, right on the, on the, that site, right underneath the interactive applet there, we can put it underneath so that they're all listed there for each of the marking periods? Yeah, or even changing of, again, one year's worth. I mean, if the filters continue to evolve over the years, all that's gonna be there in the cloud anyhow. Yep.
And I imagine as, you know, this is the first year, as we're going through from year to year, you know, being able to follow those trends, if there's certain things that you want us to look at, you'll be showing us the previous years up through whatever data point you want us to focus on.
Yeah, I haven't thought about that yet. I'm happy to.
I'm all about trends, because the numbers tell the story. And you know, I've been really excited about this whole project. You know, I've seen this before, but not to this level and definitely not as transparent as this, you know, for anyone in the community or anywhere to be able to access and look at. And it's just like a low accountability, but also helps us, you know, as a board, to see and understand what you guys are seeing. So, you know, we can ask the right questions and make sure the resources get to where they need to go to help all of the students, so. And I know that this is just gonna keep getting better and better. And honestly, I don't even know how you do that, because I think this is phenomenal.
Thank you. Yeah, we've been getting some really great feedback, just in conversations with other districts as well. How did you do it? How can I do it? So more to come, and not that I have it even in mind yet, but it evolves over time, just like this project did. So I'm excited to see what else it might have in store.
Again, just to reiterate, thank you for your leadership. It certainly, it certainly shows in your shining, so thank you so much, Danielle.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I have, I'd like to have Mrs. Burnett and Mr. Ziegler come up. They have some exciting news to share about our mid-level science curriculum. The other day, or what's, about a week now, or so, two weeks there, somewhere in that vicinity, two weeks?
Oh, very, very.
Okay. They received a call from the Board of Regions wanting to know what sets Baldensville apart, specifically with the mid-level science curriculum. Again, this speaks volumes to our leadership and our teachers and our students and also our community. So without further ado, please share us, share with us what the secret sauce is.
So the secret sauce is that we're doing our jobs and our teachers are doing their jobs. So I don't know why we specifically were asked to do this report. I think we ask a lot of questions at the Bosse's level and we're in constant contact with the science coordinator. And we participate fully in what they have to offer for science. So I think we just have a very good relationship. And so looking at our six through eight, which is where the Board of Regions was specifically looking to see some updates on, we're at the six through eight level. That is the level that will be first impacted by the new assessments. So we basically just shared two slides, although they took our slides and they made it State Eddie. Yeah, they changed it.
They made it theirs.
They made it theirs. So, but essentially what we shared with them was that we started this process six years ago. The first year that I was hired in the district, we hit the ground running when the science standards, we knew that they were going to be adopted. So we started a science transition team, as you can see, and we worked with that team very closely and spent a lot of time, the first couple of years, taking a look at the new standards, looking at the performance expectations at the middle level, six, seven, eight, and we did our research. And so we landed on a conceptual approach to those performance expectations, which is different than what we used to do in the past, which is to be more domain-specific at each one of the grade levels. So now students are getting a little bit of everything in science, right? In sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, because we know that they all overlap. And so we really think it's a stronger opportunity for students to learn science. So we spent a lot of time with our professional development with our staff, and this is what I shared with the Board of Regions, is that it was very important that we have common language around three-dimensional learning and assessments. So when I said DCIs, right, I wanted everybody in the room to know what that meant. So we spent a lot of time with them, our professional development. We also did, as some of you might remember, a board retreat where we had the board come in and we actually went through a lesson that would have been done in old style, right, and a lesson that was inquiry-based. And, you know, it was, it was interesting. And it's harder, it's harder for the teachers to plan for. It's harder for the students because they're so accustomed to having everything given to them, right? So now we're saying, let's ask the questions. What are you curious about? So we knew that one of the biggest challenges that we would have would be our resources. And so the next slide, we will have Eric talk a little bit about the Smithsonian units and the district curriculum that we've been working on.
So it was truly an honor. You know, we meet with Chris Lees a lot, like Renee said. And when we were approached, you know, to speak at the State Board of Regions, you know, that's one in a lifetime chance, a lot of times. So here we are, we were getting the chance to highlight our six-eight curriculum, but it truly builds what Renee was just talking about, our K-12 continuum, looking at that learning progression and making sure that it's articulated with three-dimensional science. And we were allowed to talk about that at the middle level, at the six-eight band, which we're looking at some life science, some earth science, some, you know, some engineering and applications of technology there. So we decided to highlight our RAY students here, but truly it's this six-eight band, right? So we take nine different units at every different domain and every grade level gets to experience three-dimensional learning. So what is that, right? So there's eight science and engineering practices. We want our kids to be collaboratively, you know, working through inquiry. We want them to be doing investigative phenomenon and anchoring phenomenon, looking at local connections to investigate, right, connections where three-dimensional. The science and engineering practices highlights the doing of the science and getting all kids equitable on the floor. As you can see, modeling in phases of the moon or in the sixth grade example of the ecosystem unit, looking at variations and how they can engineer a pond inside the classroom. We engineered two ponds per classroom at the sixth grade level and they got to see microorganisms and macroorganisms and looking under the microscope and all types of things that we could highlight, them doing the science, right? But as an instructional coach, we have another dimension that I always weave in when I'm instructionally planning with them, or if we're looking at the unit to look at coherent storylines, that's the cross-cutting concepts. And that's things like causality or patterns or stability and change. And what we try to really highlight with the teachers is to really look at the lessons with that focus or that learning lens in mind. Because if I'm looking at modeling the moon or if I'm looking at, you know, looking for stability in that ecosystem lesson like we see up there, I want to look for patterns, I want to look for cause and effect, right? So having that focus and keeping, reminding the students, that's what we're coming back to. There's seven of them, right? Seven cross-cutting concepts that we highlight within these lessons to learn what Renee was talking about, disciplinary core ideas. And that's the earth science that's been there for millions of years and this physical science of chemistry and physics and the life science and AP Biology, living environment, that kind of stuff, right? But it's using these other two dimensions very strategically in ways that we highlight students doing science and engineering in the classroom. So that was, you know, that was basically the highlight, right? You know, to really show that You know, to really show that Baldonsville is doing the work, right? Our kids are really, really highlighting this collaborative inquiry process. So our kids are acting like scientists, they're acting like engineers. And when they're coming out of it, they're moving to that next level, that next grade level and bringing those skills, right? Those engineer skills or those science skills to that next regions level, right? When they get out of this six-eight grade band, when they hit our earth science regions or when they hit our living environment regions or physics, whatever it may be, that they have a great foundation. And this not only is highlighted in the six-eight, but we're doing this ever since I came out of the classroom as an AP Biology teacher. Joe sent me to Project Lead the Way and we have a K-12 continuum with Project Lead the Way. We have Smithsonian science that are really, really highlighting these kids doing science and doing it in great ways, right? We're looking at kids really excited and being motivated to do science and engineering. So, you know, we're, again, fortunate to be asked by our OSCE's and it was a pleasure to do it.
And I'll, and I'll highlight that we are fortunate that we do have a former science teacher as a learning coach. I couldn't imagine doing what we've done over the last six years without his support, right? We have fantastic science teachers in the classrooms already. So just having him there to help answer those questions in the moment, in the classroom, has just been invaluable. And I think it just shows. So it was an honor and we, we were very appreciative of the opportunity to represent the OC and OSCE's region. So thank you. Do you have any questions?
I don't have a question. I just want to say that I remember, you know, the whole process that you guys went through from the beginning. So I think that started about the time that I got on the board, when we were talking about the new standards coming out and how different they were. And then incorporating like the engineering component that teachers were not trained or had any experience in, which was pretty scary. And then you guys were talking, I remember a presentation also, you know, how are we going to do? I remember a presentation being, you know, we think that we've decided that going to conceptual model is the best way to go for this. I knew when we did that retreat with you guys, how much more exciting science is going to be? Because it, it's different, it's definitely, I'm sure, different for planning for the teachers, which was a huge change and, you know, change sometimes is uncomfortable for people. But I think, you know, for the kids, it is so much more exciting because they're really involved in that, being told cookie cutter, step by step, you know, you can follow directions, you can do it, but what does it all mean? And I think that's one of the things that's going to help the students definitely as they're going forward to the higher grades. And I was just within the strategic planning committee meeting and this was a conversation that we somehow got on at the table, looking at the graduate study review from 2005 to 2012 graduates. And there was a part about lab, we got on that discussion of how, I don't want to say boring as a science teacher, but that's how we were trained with the labs. And it's just going to be so much more exciting and seeing this is, you know, this is a huge honor. We appreciate all the work that the teachers have put in on this because it has been a long process.
Renee, I just want to say that I appreciate you saying that. I think we're very fortunate to have a science teacher as a coach because sometimes, you know, we have teachers in those positions that may have like a math background or, or something else. So I, I know I've seen Eric at meetings and he's been working very hard with the teachers on this. So I appreciate that.
I appreciate you saying that.
I wasn't on.
I said my mic wasn't on, but you can hear me.
Yes. So this is fully implemented, right? Right now in Baldonsville, six through eight? Or are people, are teachers still developing the units?
Yeah.
We, we're still developing units, but starting in September, seventh grade is full on, right? So they will be fully aligned. So, you know, I've given permission for teachers to, this is the time for us to make mistakes, right? Let's figure out what these units can do for us, what they can't do. And, you know, it's just like any other program that you purchase, you cannot do every single thing that they give you because otherwise we would be teaching, you know, every single day for every moment. So we have to really be thoughtful about what it is that we select and, and choose and teach with our students. So they've been spending a lot of time going through those units, teaching them and saying, okay, this, we now know that next year we might take this out or we might add this in or do a little bit more. So teachers are taking that time now to do that, to do that work. And they will be working this summer as well to really tighten things up, especially from, from my consideration at seventh grade. That's another thing. Like, I'm very happy that our district, you know, gives you time over the summer to do that. Yes.
Yes.
Right, Joe?
I just want to make a quick statement. Obviously, I don't have an education, you know, my background's not in education, but I do have a sixth grader and having him come home, and he is a unique learner in some capacity. And just hearing your presentation, hearing him, the kids have a different, that, you know, three-dimensional ways of learning. It's not just textbook and listening and reading and having hands-on and seeing it. He was actually trying to describe to us about the moon phases and he talked about the ecosystem project. So it covers all students, which is really great to see and hear and see it be implemented. So thank you for all you do.
Danielle, I think that's great. I, you know, I see it with my son when he comes home and just the, the few classes that we can't get more than a couple of grunts out of them on are certainly the hands-on. And I think the work that has been done in the science program here has been outstanding. So congrats. And by the way, I can tell Rob that I get first dibs on engineers that come up first.
I was wondering when we were going to make that connection.
Again, thank you to both of you and our team. We're very proud of you. Thank you. You too.
Joe?
We have some textbooks tonight.
Yeah, so the first one that we have listed here is the textbook request first reading for the elementary grades one through two ELA. So this is a decodable series that we're looking to purchase. It'll be on the agenda for the next meeting for approval. Has gone through a process and, you know, we are excited about having these options, more resources available for teachers and for students so that they can have a more likely success for meeting with success with reading as they're learning to read. Any questions on the first decodable? I know it's been in the weekly letter. And then the second one, C, is for ELA in grade K. So another decodable series. And this will also appear on the May 23 meeting for approval.
I just want to compliment, first of all, I enjoy reading the article that was attached to that. It gave a good understanding about what these are and how they're used. And I love the analogy with the training wheels. And, you know, it's set for the particular grades, but, you know, it's showing that, you know, it's going to be useful for those students who may, you know, struggle a little bit in the grade above, but also he knows differentiating and learning. You know, you're going to touch upon and challenge that student who isn't quite degree first and second, they're still in kindergarten, how useful they are. So I appreciate the extra information on the documents.
We'll jump in on that one as well. I mean, I think that's, again, the more that we can get some insight into that, at least from my perspective, that, that certainly helps. So thanks for sending that along.
And I would add too, if there's anything that comes up by the time these are initially first placed in the, in the weekly letter or two, let us know because we can get additional resources if you still have questions as we move through other textbook series or processes moving forward.
So the next part, we have our first reading for a series of policies. Are there any questions with those?
Just going to comment, these, these do include everyone updates along with just the general review of the 2000 series, which we were, that's a docket.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. Item A, result that the Board of Education approved the appointment of chairperson, machine technician, DSS specialist, elections inspectors, and chief election inspectors for the Baldonsville Central School District 2022 to 2023. Budget vote and school board elections being held on May 17, 2022 pursuant to attach. Can I have a motion, please? Tony first, Brian second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item B, result that the Board of Education approved a touch-up adoption of grades in the world, a global history, resources by Robert W. Schrader and Eric W. Nelson to be used in grade 10 social studies classes at Baker High School pursuant to attach. Can I have a motion, please? Brian first. Tony second. Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, just a, just a couple of comments. I mean, based on the, on what was said earlier tonight, I, you know, I was, I'll, I'll admit I was the board member that, that had the comments at the last public board of education meeting about, about the particular textbook. And I, I want to draw some context to, to my comments because I think in some respects it may have been taken out of context and want to draw two distinctions. First and foremost, I mean, looking at the approval of textbooks and I appreciated Joe's explanation at the last meeting about how several texts were, were brought to our social studies teachers' community, especially in the AP community, to, to look at the various texts that were, that were approved for, for AP courses. And I apologize if I'm not using the right words, but I, again, I'm not a full-time educator, but I, you know, just looking at, looking at the material, I want to, again, draw a distinction between two aspects. The first is I understand the process better, which is I am, I am a fully processed person. I will always tell you that. As you can tell from earlier tonight, I'm data-driven as well. So I really, I really appreciate getting into the details of things. When I, as a, as somebody who has a political science degree, I'll, I'll throw out my, my credentials, my political science degree with a focus on international relations. I've been to over 40 countries globally and done business in most of them and also have adopted some from a communist country. You know, looking at how certain principles are applied around the world and, and the, and the context in which history is taught is very important. And it's not in any way, shape, or form to criticize or to, or to draw a distinction on how something is presented. And again, as, as somebody who has spent a lot of time researching topics, being involved in those cultures and actually understanding, and I'm not saying that other people do not understand, the, the teacher that spoke tonight is certainly well-aware of being involved and certainly taking part in, in society and, and the former Soviet Union. I, my, my context for the comment around the Industrial Revolution still stands, which is I think there were some liberties taken by the author in the book to celebrate the topic of socialism, which I understand at the time was, was being debated in, in society. But the comment still stands that I think it may have been overly stated and that there were not alternatives looked at for the workers' rights movement in, in that particular context. I think the other piece that we ought to learn from in history is that if we, you know, as the statement says, if we don't understand it, we're doomed to repeat it. Karl Marx was one of the most racist, anti-Semitic people and philosophers or political organizers that has been on this earth. And, and again, I stress that, we need to put it in the context of the times. So even though there was movement for workers' rights, for human rights, following several revolutions in Europe at the time when his philosophy was, was published with his co-writer, it's important to understand the context of those, those times. I think the same goes for now. I think the, the teachings and the book discussions that were brought up tonight, again, are a reminder that there are other social elements that are influencing our society that we need to be aware of. So again, I go back to it was not a criticism of what is being taught. It was a criticism of an author's comment in the books. I voted yes for the textbook tonight because I understand that, that history can be taught in many different frames and viewed through many different lenses. And we should celebrate that. And I think that's very important to get those perspectives across. But I just wanted to clarify my comments from the last board meeting and be sure that that's well-known. So, thanks.
Oh, we also have to vote? I don't know if we did it or not. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item C, result that the girls' crew team traveled to participate in the Scholastic Rowing Association of America Championship Regatta in Camden, New Jersey, May 27 to 28, 2022 pursuant to attach. Can I have a motion, please? Well, Shelley first, Second Frank. Any questions or discussion?
Good luck to them.
Matt, did you say something?
I just said, good luck to them.
Oh, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item D, result that the Board of Education approved the Baldonsville Central School District shared decision-making plan by annual review pursuant to attach. Can I have a motion, please? Brian first. Denise second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item E, result that the Board of Education approved the Baldonsville Central School District Professional Learning Plan for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025 pursuant to attach. Can I have a motion, please? Tony first. Second Brian. Any questions or discussion?
I have one quick question. How, other than individuals who are involved with the district, how were, like, how was the representative for the parent, teacher association selected?
We, the feedback. We, we typically, just like we do for the shared decision-making plan. Joe, I'll mute you for a minute and then just unmute you. We typically put out for requests unless it's somebody who's expressed interest. So we, it has to be, it says, it lists there as a parent-teacher association, it has to be a parent. So similar to what we did with the strategic plan, the shared decision-making plan, we put out a request and people who express interest, we try to narrow it down from there.
Thank you.
So Joe, the shared decision-making plan that we just did, that we just approved, all the different stakeholder groups for the professional development. So we now need to insert those next year or the next, in two years when we review this, or actually, this will be three years. Because we have, like, all, we added some, some of the stakeholder groups were added as like eyes for influencer and stuff. So do we have to work them in the next time this is, do we look at?
We shouldn't have to do that and we will do this again next year only because for the professional learning plan, there's specific representation that has to be included based on the state. And the folks that you see represented here are those stakeholders. So not everybody that would be on the, based on the shared decision-making plan would be included here on the professional learning plan. That's spelled out by the state.
So you just have like committees district-wide to kind of pull everyone else in to get to that?
Correct.
Got it?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item S, result that the Board of Education approved the one-year extension of the Baldonsville Central School District Strategic Plan 2017 to 2022 for 2022, 2023 with changes pursuant to attach. Can I have a motion, please? Ryan first. Shelley second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item G will be a role. Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item G will be a roll call. Resulted the Board of Education approved the resolution, resolution for settlement of McLean Company Incorporated versus the town of Lyssanor pursuant to attach. Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Shelley first, Brian second. And then Kim will do the roll call for that.
Jen, Trina?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to item H, resulted the Board of Education approved the Baldwins Public Library Agreement for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year pursuant to attach. Can I have a motion, please? Denise first.
Sorry.
Frank second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item I, resulted the Board of Education approved the disposal of surplus equipment and instructional materials pursuant to attach. Can I have a motion, please? Brian first, Tony second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item J, resulted the Board of Education approved the agreement with Ohio, Ohio Pile Prints Incorporated pursuant to attach. Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Shelley first, Tony second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Item K, resulted the Board of Education approved the resolution pursuant to attach. Can I have a motion, please? Tony first.
Second.
Denise second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. We now move to the board roundtable portion of the meeting. Does anyone have anything for tonight?
I have, um, something about homeschool and sports. So I know, I recognize, I, I didn't email you beforehand, so you may not have the answers tonight, but, um, I had a community member ask about, um, there was a bill that was passed by the Senate for homeschool sports bill, um, which would allow homeschool students to participate in sports with the district that they're aligned with. So I didn't know if you had any information on that or you could provide some in the future.
We, we don't at this, excuse me, at this time, but it certainly would be worthy of, of a discussion.
And I was just going to add, I don't believe that it made its way all the way through. It was just on the one side. So this is, from what I recall, this has been an ongoing issue where there's been, uh, folks that have advocated for that legislation to provide that as an opportunity. Um, it does come up in section three, New York State Public High School Association, um, conversations and dialogue. Um, but speaking for, you know, many schools within the area, it's my understanding though, um, that that is ultimately something that folks weren't interested in here in, in, in this section because of the fact that we don't allow that for other extracurricular, um, activities or, uh, groups or clubs. Uh, so I don't know that it's fully gone through, but that would certainly be a conversation moving forward.
So you'll kind of look into it and?
Yeah, we'll keep, we'll, we'll keep monitoring it and then if we receive updates, uh, we'll certainly keep the full board posted. Thank you.
I had, uh, emailed a topic earlier today that I, uh, just, uh, copied my board colleagues as well. I think I, um, the topic was, um, separate legal representation for, for the board versus the, the district. And, uh, out of, out of respect for Mr. Marie not being able to attend, I prefer we wait and have that discussion so he can participate in that. So I will move off until, until he's back and we're all back as a full board.
I just have, um, we got an email, um, from Superintendent Thompson today that we've already met with the VTA and the, about this union was wondering if we'd be interested in meeting with them. Um, I know we haven't talked about that formally, um, but I think it's something that we should absolutely consider doing for a number of reasons. The last board meeting or maybe two ago, we talked about, you know, I, I know what it was, is the policies, you know, how is that information getting down? This may be a good opportunity with the administrative leaders to help us, um, you know, get our message across easier because I'm listening to, you know, I think, um, when we ask questions, what, what the community understands, we're not educators and we have a lot of turnover on the board and sometimes it may seem like we're asking the same question all the time. And a lot of that's because we simply have new board members trying to understand the processes that are in place and how a school system works. Um, I'm just, it's very important. This board is very engaged. It's probably the most engaged group since I've been on the board and asking questions are vital. It's important, that's our job to do. And I think back, you know, a couple of weeks ago when, you know, one of the teachers came upset with a question that was asked. And I've done a lot of thinking about that and the question was a good question. You know, when you're looking at the report and you're being asked to approve a book for sixth grade class and it's for, listed as a K to two, you know, that's a legitimate question and it's an important question because that question, depending upon how it's answered, can lead to many other important questions such as, do we know why this is occurring? And is this a trend or is this isolated to this cohort? What supports are being used and additional supports needed? Do you need additional staff, additional materials? Has there been a change in the reading program? We can't get to those questions until we ask the first question. And what I don't want, when I have some of my board colleagues, I get, I get nervous when I have board colleagues asking if certain questions are appropriate or should they ask? And, and that's not right and that's not fair to them. That's certainly not fair to the students. So somehow conveying that message that we're not questioning the teachers, we're trying to understand processes. I'm excited because I think our job's going to make it a lot easier now that we have, like, a data table and those are going to be focused. I mean, years on the board, some of us have been asking for data to help understand because it tells a story and the best boards are very data savvy and use that information to help figure out where funds need to go, where supports are needed for all of our students. So that's one of the reasons why. That's what I anticipated with the meeting that we had with another group, that that's the type of conversation that we would have to help us convey information to teachers. But, you know, maybe we can at least start with BAPAS to make that happen. So I don't know when we would do that because I look at a schedule and we have a lot of Mondays, a lot of committee meetings between now and the end of the year. But I say, think about it and then we can have a discussion. Um, or maybe, you know, you can work with your team to figure out when, you know, some times will work for the cabinet and that union and we can go from there and send out a doable. It's a busy time of year, but we'll ask and we try. Does anyone have anything else?
I didn't, I didn't put this out to everybody because I was reflecting on some things and it actually got brought up this weekend at a, a school-related event in regards to transportation. And I don't know if Kim, if you can speak to this or if it's something that you guys need to go back to, to Mike. Um, is the speed limit, um, on highways, um, our buses apparently go fifty-five miles an hour? Um, the speed limit's sixty-five. I do recall a couple, it was a couple of years ago, listening to, um, the justification for that, um, but there has been concern that traveling fifty-five on a highway, a throughway, speed limit sixty-five, it potentially could be a hazard. Um, I don't know if that's a policy or, or just a district for Baldwinsville or if it's a state transportation. Um, just for some clarification perhaps maybe. And I don't, I put you on the spot, so I need to come back, obviously.
You know, Shelley, I, we did this before. We thought about putting a resolution up for this. Uh, I think they wanted to put a resolution up to school boards and I researched it. And it's not just statewide, it's almost nationwide and even Canada. Um, they've done a lot of research on the impact of school buses when they do have crashes. Uh, the, you know, just the size of the vehicle alone. So if you research, you're going to find that it's fifty-five everywhere.
And Shelley, when that was brought up before, it's not in the traffic laws, it's in the ed laws. And in the, uh, education law, it actually specifies it's fifty-five. When students are on the vehicle, I believe.
Thank you for that clarification because there was some interpretation that, um, it may have just been a district policy. Um, so I just thought I'd bring it up to ask. So, thank you.
And I believe that is correct in saying that it is when students are on board, there is a differentiation when we're empty.
That's why so the teams or whatever, when they travel, get charter buses. Make them go faster under charter buses, any kind of school bus.
Thank you.
Anything else tonight? Resulted the Board of Education entrance to executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person or corporation or the medical, financial or credit history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation and collective negotiations pursuant to Taylor Law to discuss the cabinet contracts. Can I have a motion, please? I think that was Shelley. Oh, Frank?
She doesn't need your voice.
Frank first, Denise second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passes eight zero. Take about five minutes and we'll come back for executive session. Thank you.